As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton, for it's in your great name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Two, Mr. Mayor. On one, an item under new business to add, which is a COVID reopening update. We have a brief presentation on that. Under new business, I guess, item B under new business will be the COVID reopening update. And then item number 7A under old business, the RTZ agreement. We want to take that to closed session. We've got some updated economic development information for you, so we'd like to take that to closed session.
I have those noted. Up next is the consent agenda.
Move, we approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is new employee introduction.
We don't have James Warren here. Rich, you have to.
Okay, no problem. If he gets a little behind, it's okay. We'll, we can jump back up there if we need to. Then we'll move along under our public hearings, and the first one is 2020-74-RZ, O'Neill Overlook rezoning.
you tonight is 2020-74-RZ, and the request is rezone about 15 acres of land from RE to R8. And the red star is where we did place the public notice sign, and it is on O'Neill Street. And it is located south of the Rowland, excuse me, north of the Rowland Woods subdivision. And the existing use is single-family and vacant wooded land. The current zoning map, as you can see here, it is RE, and most of everything around it is zoned, R8. And that PDR would be the Academy Point Plan Development Residential subdivision. So I wanted to go over some basics of the rezoning. Again, this rezoning is just a, is a conventional rezoning. So any use in an R8 district would be allowed, whether that would be conventional or open space. So some main differences between the RE zoning designation and the R8 zoning designation for a conventional subdivision. For RE, your lots will range somewhere between 20,000 to 40,000 square feet, and that depends on the utilities that are available, and whether you use public or private. And in R8 subdivision, conventional subdivision would be about 8,000 square foot lots. And the, now, for conventional, in open space, the lots are eligible to go down to smaller if they do a cluster development with open space provided. The density allowed currently in a RE conventional zoning is going to be 2.1 to 1 unit an acre. And then in RA, you can go up to 5 units an acre. And there is different open space requirements, which allow for cluster development in smaller lot sizes if the applicant chooses instead of doing a conventional subdivision. The consistency with the Comprehensive Plan 2040, the Comprehensive Plan does designate this as low-density residential. In the Comprehensive Plan, low-density residential is up to 3 units an acre. And medium density in the Comprehensive Plan is 5 units an acre or up to 7 units an acre for a plan development. Staff does support the rezoning due to the proximity of the way that the town has grown since this Comprehensive Plan was adopted. And as we all know, we're in the process of updating our Comprehensive Plan, so it is inconsistent, as shown for low-density residential, because this would be considered medium-density residential for the R8, but the staff does support it. Again, Planning Board recommend approval of the rezoning request, and staff also recommends approval and supports the rezoning. Questions?
Any questions or comments for planning, Mr. Granis?
Samantha, I understand that this is not in the 2040 plan as far as the rezoning, acceptable rezoning. However, I'm assuming that part of the reason that, that staff is accepting of this is because of adjacent, well, not necessarily adjacent, but other developments that are relatively close to this particular area. And that would be Ashcroft and also the Ark property. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, sir. I do think that's a fair statement to say, that the proximity to downtown, and then how we have changed in the last five years since this was adopted. And you can see right across the street, it has medium density residential right across the street. So I do feel confident in that zoning designation for the surrounding area.
Okay. And then in the questions that came up from the neighborhood meeting, one of the questions that arose was, is there a buffer between this project and adjacent properties? And the answer was no, none required. Could you speak to that?
The, if the zonings are light zonings, and it's not a plan development resident, in the plan developments, you do have to have a buffer on all property lines. But in a conventional subdivision, that may not be required. But they have a subdivision application that was submitted this past summer, and this is just the rezoning portion. And so that is a quasi-judicial that will come before the council that it is. So that could be a condition that is placed on the subdivision at that time.
That's what I suspected, but wasn't positive about that. Thank you. It's all ahead.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. This has been noted as a public hearing, and I'll now open the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Emily Beddingfield. I'm the applicant on this petition, and I'm representing the developer, J&amp;B Real Estate Consultants. Thank you so much for being here this evening to hear our case. I just wanted to step up and quickly note that we concur 100% with the recommendations that were provided by the planning staff. I agree from both the planning standpoint and from the development perspective that the formerly identified low-density residential title that was applied to this general area of town is no longer applicable. It's sort of sitting in a donut hole, if you will, with, as we all know, there's a lot of development happening almost immediately to the north of this, and, and certainly to the south of it, you run directly into our downtown area, which has consistent R8 zoning. This would make it very consistent, identical zoning with a lot of the zoning that we already see in downtown and in surrounding areas. You know, plan developments tend to even be more dense than our conventional or open space interpretations of standard zoning districts. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody may have this evening. We will be coming forth at a later date with a request for the subdivision itself, but happy to answer any questions having to do with the rezoning. Thank you so much.
Any questions from Ms. Beddingfield? Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? If there's no one else that wishes to speak on this, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, after considering the recommendations of the Planning Board and Planning Director, I move to approve case 2020-74-RZ, O'Neill Overlook, and to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness included in this agenda packet.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of case number 2020-74-RZ. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, up next, under new business, are bench donations.
Don't forget my 7B, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, my bad. Hold on just a minute, if you don't mind. I mean, this is my meeting. I can go in any order that I want to, but I'm just saying that because it's the first time you said that.
You're getting even limited for changing your agenda, huh?
Good. So, under old business, item number 7B will be the wastewater reclamation facility update and acceptance state loan.
Yes. A couple, couple notes on the, in general, on the wastewater reclamation facility project. The ECIA transmission lane and line and pump station upgrade, we did make a selection on that to the company, Weathers and Ravenell and McKim and Creed team together. We are entering into negotiations with them now and are doing the appropriate paperwork with the Economic Development Authority related to the grant, related to that project. We do have a public hearing coming up. We should get word this week or next that we are free to advertise. So sometime again, as we've talked about, in November, we'll have a public hearing for the project. Our easement work is ongoing, and as I've mentioned before, there's about 75 different parcels we've got to look at there for easements that'll impact the public. And our RFQ for our, a request for qualifications for a design builder, we hope to have that out in the latter part of October. We're meeting with the attorneys Monday to finalize that, that scope of work and advertisement. The action before tonight is adoption of a resolution related to getting the $12 million of state loans that the LGC let us borrow and that the State Revolving Fund has enabled us to borrow for the, for money upfront of the grant we received back in February. And so I think we, the only thing before you tonight is to take the action to adopt Resolution 2020-41.
Great. Good work. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Granis?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the adoption of Resolution 2020-41.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good work. Thank you, JD. All right, then move along with new business, and we'll have a discussion about bench donations.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Scott Barnard, Parks and Recreation Director.
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director.
Frickin' crack tonight. You know, before y'all this evening is a, is essentially the acceptance of two donations, but we wanted to kind of talk broadly about the policy under which these benches have come in. So Patrick and I have both received recent requests for memorial benches, one in downtown and one along the Greenway. Per the donation and memorial policy, Patrick manages requests for downtown, and I do for facilities, including parks. The policy requires us to present these to council. Both of them meet a need. One, the one requested for downtown would be located on the library property, where both Patrick and Joy feel it'll meet an existing need and where at one time there was a bench prior to its deterioration. The one along the Greenway will replace one that's already there that has also lived its useful life, and is, that site had already been identified for replacement by staff several months back. Patrick and I see this policy as an opportunity to promote this program. You know, when these came in within, I don't know, a week or 10 days of each, we scrambled and talked to Kimberly and talked to Amy in House, who keeps our policies in Parks and Rec. And we're thumbing through and reading what we're supposed to do, and what boxes we need to check. And both of these meet all those requirements. But this is a policy that we feel like we could further replace other, or add to needed benches, trees, picnic tables, bike racks, some of the other things prescribed in that policy. And that's really what we wanted to also present to y'all this evening, is the idea that we would pre-select locations for those as staff, and if y'all wanted, we would bring back that map of proposed locations, maybe even species selections of trees and whatnot. And then, at that point, we would have something that we could promote to the public with set prices for a period of time, trees, benches, bike racks, and that kind of thing. And then our, our theory would be that either quarterly or biannually, we would bring back to y'all and say, hey, you know, in the past three months, we've done six benches and four trees, and here's where they're located. Unless y'all would prefer to hear them on the front side, then we would come and say, hey, we've got these six in the hopper and these four trees. But essentially, the first is, first step was, it was our duty to come and report and present, as the policy requires, the two benches that we have posed. Stylistically, they match the style in front of the building, as well as the style of the new benches that are going at the Harney Playground and are used currently throughout the parks. So stylistically, they're the same. Ones in downtown are currently black, the ones in the parks are maroon. So, you know, stylistically, we've stayed in that same vein, and we believe that that is a classic look that won't, you know, nobody will look back on, on that in five years and go, oh, that's so 2020. We hope nobody talks about anything like that. But we feel like those benches will stand the test of time. Wanted to offer ourselves, available for any questions.
Questions or comments? I think it's a great idea. I think you have, both of you can totally handle this. I think council, obviously, and myself would love to, you know, just be included on the update. And great work. Thank you, both, very much. Mr. Granis?
Require an approval? Motion for approval on this?
Can you get into that microphone? I couldn't hear you.
All right. Do we need a, a motion for approval for this?
We do not.
So moved.
Oh, you don't think we do?
It's just going to be a policy.
Okay. It's just policy related, so thank you. So we'll jump back up to new employee introductions with our presenter, James Warren.
Mayor and council, I am pleased to introduce you to Mattie Fraser. She is our new laboratory technician. It's one of the new positions we had. She comes to us from NC State, where she graduated with a degree in natural resources and soil, water, and land use, and also a minor in applied ecology. So she's got a good environmental background. We're excited to have her. She brings with her a wealth of knowledge and some new ideas, so that's a good thing.
Hi, everybody. I've met some of you. And so, as you said, I, I'm Mattie. I just graduated from NC State. My research there was in environmental microbial ecology, so looking at things like how microbes remove wastewater pathogens and cycle nutrients to make them available for plants. And, you know, this is really a lot of central concepts to the work I'm doing over with wastewater. So I'm excited to be starting my career, doing something I find interesting, and I think's really important for, you know, towns like Clayton, as people move out from the cities and the towns grow, to be able to understand and kind of harness those, those processes to make sure that, you know, water's clean and safe for everybody. So, you know, I've been here a week, and like I said, I've got to meet some of you. I really appreciate how welcoming everybody's been, and thanks a lot for the opportunity to be here.
Well, we're glad to have you. Welcome. We're glad to have someone with your skillset on the team. That's wonderful. And if you've been here a week and you're still coming back, that's even better.
Okay, okay.
Very excited to have you, Mattie.
Thank you.
And thank you, as always.
Haven't been here in a while, so I'm sure the protocol.
All right. Up next on our agenda is going to be a facility open plan.
And as Jeffra's coming to the stage and the PowerPoint's coming up, just to remind council that we talked last time about six principles that Jeffra and the rest of staff had developed in, in coming to you guys with a more fully developed plan. We're not going to be asking for any approvals tonight, but we're going to pass along the written text after we do this brief presentation. And we'll also provide you some information from some other communities in the area. She's got one slide on that, but she'll have some more detail that'll also be passed on to you. We would like to get some comments at your convenience. The whole intent here is for staff to have you ready to reopen when you guys decide it's time to reopen. And so we'll be waiting for you guys to either edit this plan or to give us the, the go-ahead when it's time. So Jeffra, I'm going to give it to you after that introduction. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Good evening.
All right, fire away.
Good evening.
As part of the Town of Clayton COVID-19 response, and of course, planning for reopening at some point, a team was compiled of employees from various departments to come up with a plan to successfully open to the public. Reopening brings risk to both our employees and the public that we provide services to. So with that, we developed a process to assess those risks, and then come up with a plan to mitigate those risks down to an acceptable level. So this is what we've come up with. The phase one of reopening would be limited 60 to 90 days, testing out how things work. The buildings would be placed into a classification system from 1 to 4, depending on the operation of those buildings. And then the employees and visitors would be required to wear masks and also practice the three Ws that the state recommends. So here is the classes. Class 1 would be Town Hall and Operations Building. They open to the public. They provide the majority of our services throughout the day. They'd have access limited to one entrance. There would be a wellness assessment done on both the employees and visitors. There would be signs that would indicate direction of travel. We'd have hand sanitizing stations throughout. We would have signs that would direct them to the departments and what each department protocol is at that location. Visitors would be encouraged to enter and vacate the building on the conclusion of their business. Also, this class 1 facility at this time during phase 1 would house the training and meeting spaces so that we could schedule and control those spaces. Class 2 facilities, these are your facilities that have their access controlled already, and the limit, their limit to the public is controlled more so. These are your police department, fire stations, and also the water reclamation facilities. There would also be the wellness assessment assigned into the buildings. There would be signs indicating, again, information that's vital to minimize our risk. At these facilities, minor meetings such as staff meetings and squad changes and shift changes would be taking place, but any major external meetings and trainings would be directed to the class 1 facilities. In these buildings, enhanced cleaning protocols would be put in place. Class 3 facilities, again, access is limited. There would be wellness assessments done. These facilities would close early, like the phase, I mean, the class 1 and class 2 close early to perform enhanced cleanings. Again, signage would be implemented, and all-town training back to the class 1 facilities. And they would focus on outdoor activities. Meetings would be encouraged to be virtual at this point, if could, if that could be taken into consideration. And then focus on a reservation system to control those activities. Class 4 facilities, these are our storage buildings. Basically, these buildings would implement the three Ws. Basically, these buildings would implement the three Ws when participating or having access to these buildings. And that basically, we did a benchmarking of towns and cities around us to see what they were doing. And you can take a look at this slideshow here, and it tells us the cities near us that some of them are comparable to us. Raleigh's a little bigger than we are, but it tells you where they are at this stage, if they're open. And if they are open, do they conduct those wellness assessments? Also, are they doing it on the public versus just their employees? And then, any additional practices and procedures that they have in place at this point. And this is for your consideration to take a look at and to keep in mind what our plan is. I feel that our plan is enhanced, that we have put forth here as to the towns and municipalities around us. So I feel good that we're putting out a good plan to protect both our employees as well as the public that we serve.
Can you go back to Phase Three slide?
Sure. Huh, maybe not. I honestly do run PowerPoint presentations. Are you talking about the Class Three building?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's an example of focus on a reservation system or a timed entrance/exit when programming?
An example would be, say, we have a yoga class. In order to attend those yoga classes, you would have to reserve the time spot so we can control the amount of people that is attending the class to ensure that social distancing, the three Ws are followed, and so forth, and to allow the end of class, if there's another corresponding one coming up, to allow for enhanced cleaning between those classes.
Got you. That sounds like a strong plan.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily charge, but we would kind of sell tickets and reservations, so to speak, that people could sign up for and receive, so that we kind of lock the number of participants.
Much more control. That's great. All right, any questions or comments from council? Mr. Granis.
When would you expect to want to go live with this project?
I would say that's up to you all.
Yeah, we hear different things, like y'all hear, from what the governor may do and how this will be released. As I've mentioned in the past, every time we go to a different level, I guess, from two to 2.5, from 2.5 to 2.8, we get more interest from the public to get back in the public facilities. And so any announcement from the governor would probably trigger another interest in us reopening to some standpoint. So we're okay. You know, like everything, this is pretty controversial in some ways, because people either believe in COVID reopening or they don't. But we want to keep the town prepared and ready, so when it looks like the governor's moving, or you guys think it's time to move, we will move. But we're not necessarily going to open out of the current practice until we get some higher form of authorization to do so, so.
For me, I am, I think we're extremely blessed and fortunate to have transitioned as well as we have with facilities being closed and still offering that excellent level of customer service. We have had a couple of citizens who've attended our meetings and actually been on public record, asking for the town to be, you know, to get back open, primarily for financial transactions and that kind of thing. But I am, I'm really happy with the work that's been done here. It shows that we in the Town of Clayton have a definite level of commitment to the quality of health of our employees, as well as our citizens, because we are definitely all in this together. So, you know, I think to speak to JD's point, exactly on point with, you know, what the governor is going to declare for the state, but I do see us getting to the point where we will be able to reopen the Town of Clayton facilities, and we're going to be smart about it, and we're going to, you know, do our very best to keep it as timely as possible, but most importantly, safe as possible. All right, any other comments? Thank you, Jeffra. Up down to staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm just going to do one kind of good news thing tonight, and just recognize Jeffra Patton for the work she's been in, that I've really noticed since I've been here. A couple of things I will say, that we've had some issues related to COVID and the Fire Department. We've had an ocean investigation. We've had a couple of Department of Labor-related things that she's had to handle, probably thanklessly and tirelessly. We have done the program you just talked about, the building openings and whatnot. And then one of the things that I come from is a safety culture throughout my career in companies that have really bought into that. I saw a deficit here, even though Jeffra's been here a while, and we talked about it. So we reconstructed our COVID B team, which is our department managers. It meets a couple of times a month. To be a COVID B team, call it B, but there's an A team and a B team, but the COVID B will also be going forward, our Wellness and Safety Committee. And so that way, we'll have our department managers in at the right level to share the, some of the accidents we do have every month, but more importantly, the near misses, so that every department can hear from the other. And I've asked Jeffra to make sure she steps up and be part of that and lead that, and she's done that. So I just want to recognize her, and as you said, Mr. Mayor, our commitment to the safety of not only our employees but the public, and that we put that at the very highest level of concern. So just thank her for all she's done.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeffra.
Two other things I've got that probably are all good news, actually. Two are related, two, A and B are related to financial, sales tax revenue. And just to give you some notes, I don't know if you guys have seen it. If you'll recall, in July, our sales tax revenue was at $548,000. Compared to a year ago, that was at $436,000. So we had a record collection in July, and that trend kept on in August. August was at $488,000. So a little bit less, as it's always been, but still up, up from $414,000, which was in August a year ago. So year over year, we're still up, and we're up at a meaningful amount. So that's good news. You guys have heard some issues we've tackled with expenses and trying to get our hands around some of those, but having the sales tax revenue up is a good sign. And Ann will talk a little bit about some of the collection stuff she's done later, I believe, so that's additional good news, as far as us continuing to collect revenue coming in. So collecting more revenue, controlling our costs, I think we'll be in good shape to evaluate in December where we're at at mid-year, as our budget says. I'll also say, we're also looking into, we talked about it last time, but we continue to do our work on our financial practices like contracting, procurement, payment. As we've said before, we're going to probably double the amount of money that's passing through our system with the new water reclamation facility. So we want to make sure we've got everything in place to kind of, whether we want the new generation of financial times or not, they're coming. So, but I will say this too, as I add to that, we did receive another award for our CAFRA, for our budget reports and whatnot. So to assure the public that we are collecting the money and putting it in the right spot, it's just we've got to stay on top of the technology and the business processes to continue to keep our financial system in good shape. So that's what we'll be doing. The other thing I'll say is, in the planning realm, there's a couple parts here, but we're working, Samantha, yep, Samantha's still here, but our 160D and our comprehensive plan, which are two different elements, but they're moving on a similar time path. We've got public hearings on those, and we're working, Kathy is here. We've been working a lot with our communications aspect to make sure that information's getting to the development community. We have worked as a staff, a lot of departments now coming together, work with our development community and a lot of outreach that we're doing, so we're trying to hit that more across the board, including me, and not a stovepipe-type approach where we're just hitting it in little pieces. So we want to keep that holistic. And working with Patrick as well, bringing on economic development activities, you guys continue to see that. I will say this, we will be, continue to be challenged in our general fund, CIP. There are more great projects that we need to do, and infrastructure we need to have, and we have money for it, we can afford. But again, we're working for a team to find our synergies and our overlays with that. So we'll be working a lot with Patrick on the economic development and Rich and our general infrastructure program to make sure we're getting the greatest bang for our buck. So more projects coming and more presentations, but I just want to give you an update on our planning and economic development activity. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any questions for JD? All right, thank you, sir. Town attorney?
No, it's work.
All right, we're going to move on to other staff, beginning with the street blade sign
Good evening, Mayor. Rich Capola, Deputy Town Manager, kind of pinch-hitting for the Streets Division slash Engineering Department tonight. Just a quick update for you folks. The last six to eight months, the Engineering Department has been updating our standards and specifications internally, discussing those updates with the intent of hopefully being able to roll those out just after the first of the year. But one item that's come up that the Street Department has asked if we could go ahead and move forward with is updating our street name blades. Essentially, we get a lot of phone calls for needs or for repairs or otherwise on different roads throughout town, and in some cases, they are absolutely our responsibility because they're town facilities. However, many times, as you know, we have a lot of DOT roads or private roads in town. So one standard that we would like to move forward with here in the near term is updating that street name blade to have, which you can see here in the picture, that little last inch and a half to two inches of each of those street blades will actually indicate what type of facility the road is on. So when somebody wants to call in with an issue, they know whether it's the town that needs to respond, or DOT, or possibly somebody else. This will be done kind of on a rolling basis. We have to replace our signs regularly. They do expire, so that is something that our streets folks are constantly having to go out and replace the blades for the retroreflectivity requirement. So as we, as those get updated, or excuse me, as those get replaced over the next several years, we would like to use this as an updated standard moving forward. So it's kind of the gist of it. If you have any questions, I got one.
Mr. Bond?
Do you know if the DDA's been in communications with the Street Department about the historical blades to go on top of these?
I know there's a separate conversation going on that I believe Patrick's been involved in. I'm not sure if the managers had any other different conversations, but there's.
Yes, we've got a small group that we've formed, like a little, the DDA has been involved.
Okay.
But there's also a small group of landowners and whatnot that probably aren't up to speed, that may not be part of the DDA. So Patrick is working with them to make sure everybody's aware of the historical markers. I've also asked that as we bring that to you guys, which will be a historical Clayton kind of thing. One of the concerns is, are we making a new tax district, or are we putting new restrictions on things? So that's what we're not doing. But we want to make sure before we roll that out, everybody's well aware, this is not a special historic or a tax district, just blades on top of signs.
Just the label.
Yeah, but also, and I think our mayor's volunteered to do some of this, we also want to roll some of this out, kind of that history of Clayton. So over the next month, if we roll those out in mid-November, before Thanksgiving, on the sign, on top of the signs, that we'll have some things at the library and maybe at the Clayton Center, talking about the history of Clayton and kind of celebrating. Again, I know we've had a 150, but it's also, Patrick, is this the 10th anniversary of our historic downtown designation, or is that correct, Tim?
Yes.
So this year's our 10th for that designation. So it'll be kind of a, a little bit of a celebration of that as we roll these sign blades up top.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they don't fall through the cracks.
Yeah, no, it hasn't, and we want to publicize it. We just don't want them to appear up there one day and generate questions.
Good job.
Rich, has this been used in other towns?
Yes, there are other areas of the Triangle area that are using this right now, so it's not a brand-new idea by any means, but certainly from our standpoint, it'll be much more effective when we're trying to get information with, trying to schedule work as, you know, as reports come in for different needs.
I think it's a great idea. I just, you know, it's like, why didn't we think of this before?
We've also got some DOT requirements too, to replace our signs, right, to keep them reflective.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. So the retroreflectivity requirements, all those signs have to be replaced, plus or minus seven years is probably about what we can get out of those signs. So again, you know, that's a constant program that is always in our kind of normal operating budget every year to replace signs. So we will be moving towards stretching out that street blade just a little bit longer so we have that indicator on it.
Okay, questions for Rich? All right, up next, we're going to have a COVID utility collection update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Game Utilities and Billing Director. Sounds scary, but I promise you it's not. What we are definitely seeing is an increase in the number of customers who are on our cutoff list. Doesn't mean we cut you off for non-payment, but you appear on our cutoff list. Last year at this time, it was running about 8%. This year, it's about 15% of our customer base. Now, again, we don't cut everybody that's on the cutoff list. We're in that second month of our payment plan, so everyone who had the COVID balance signed up for a payment plan, or was forced into a payment plan, because again, we had a group of people, about 74 people, that did not respond to us when we asked them to contact us. Of those roughly 400 people that signed up for COVID payment plans, we've had about 25 who paid in full, who signed up for the payment plan, but then for whatever reason said, no, I'm paying, I'm just going to pay you off. What we're seeing is about 60% of the people who signed up for COVID payment plans not honoring the payment plan, and we're having to disconnect them. But once we disconnect them, they're being reconnected because they make the payment in full. Again, I think it was part of an education process on our part, to make sure we communicated with them and they knew exactly what they owed and when they owed. So I do believe we're going to see that number fall drastically now as we're entering into that second month of the payment plan payments. So I feel very confident in that. We've only had, out of the original 400 accounts that signed up for payment plans, these customers kind of move, or they're no longer customers. You know, they owe us a balance. Of those 10, there are, it's roughly a balance of $3,000, and we will go through our channels to collect them. So we have collection processes that we go through. They will eventually be turned over to a collection agency, and again, that's after us trying to reach them and communicate with them that they owe us this money. We are definitely seeing an increase in money that is coming into us to pay people's bills from Department of Social Services, Johnston-Harnett Lee Community Action. We're seeing a great increase in that. So there's some funds out there. And the governor announced last Thursday a program called NC 211 that we're referring customers to. It is a program to hopefully stop people from being evicted or their utilities being disconnected. They do have to be renters, and we're not only doing, we're only referring them to the program. I got information on the program, and I'm referring customers to that. We're seeing a great number of increases from nonprofits in the area, donations. So we're seeing those from places like One Compassion, which is the 127 Homes Community Arm. We're seeing them from Sanians Catholic Church. They receive funding, I'm not sure where from, but we're seeing quite a bit of funding coming in from them. And I'm also seeing, which I think is really interesting this time of year, we're seeing anonymous donations. People who are calling and paying for their friends, their neighbors, their church family, and they're asking us not to tell where the payment came from. So I typically see that at the holidays. I typically see that between Thanksgiving and Christmas, but we're seeing an increase of that now. So feeling very positive about our payment plans and our payments, and staff is working very hard to make sure that those are, that we look at this every day. So feel very confident in it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great work. Any questions for Ann? Thank you so much.
Thank Ann and her staff for all they're doing, because I think they're, it's both a little bit of sugar and a little bit of stick, isn't it, Ann, to trying to do all this? But I think vast majority of our money, we are collecting, and Ann and her staff deserve a lot of credit for the way they're doing it, so.
Thank you.
And we're going to keep y'all safe, so you can continue to do it. All right, up next is a Harmony Playground update.
Scott may have left.
Been cutting on Thursday.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. God, it's on Friday, I think. It's on Thursday.
Right off the bat, Michael Granis, what time it is on Thursday? Is it four?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, I can add that Mike Sims, who is a member of TT Creative, which is our hunting partner, ran a Facebook. is a member of TT Creative, which is our, our hunting partner, ran a, a Facebook recording today, which was a walk-through of the park, showing a lot of the apparatus, and spoke in a very excited manner about what's coming. Did not mention the day that the ribbon-cutting is, or the time, but said that it would be this week. And most of you may know that the fences are indeed down. And if you haven't gone out this week, I would suggest maybe taking a sneak peek. It's, it's really impressive, really impressive.
Great. All right, thank you, sir. Up next will be downtown crosswalks.
JD asked me to make a few comments here about some updates on downtown crosswalks. This has been, I think, an issue that's been around that preceded me, and I think we've made some good, good progress here on improving pedestrian safety, and there's maybe some future things that we can also add to that as well as we look forward here. So, so you may have seen, there were two crosswalks that appeared on a Saturday morning here at, on Main Street at Fayetteville and Church recently. I was really happy about that. I thought maybe it was my, my call to NC DOT, but, you know, it turns out there's actually a research study going on here that has been in the works for about a year and a half now. They are looking at, they have restrictions now on where high-visibility crosswalks, like the ones you see there, kind of the piano style, if you will, are, and they're typically used at only mid-block crossings. But they're doing this study at some key, key locations, doing these high-visibility crosswalks at, at corners. When we made this request, I learned about a year and a half ago, we were initially denied, but then it happened that this research study was up, and our friends at DOT said, hey, why don't we get Clayton involved in this, and maybe we can, you know, sometimes it's better be good, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good, and it happened at the time it worked out. So there were these, so there's a study underway. There are some cameras that have also been out as well, looking at pre-treatment versus post-treatment of the crosswalks, and that's going to continue. These are the intersections that they had, that they were looking at, at studying here. I've got a call on them tomorrow. We were not able to connect before the meeting, but you'll see there's also the crosswalk at the high school as well there, at, at Fayetteville and Hanby. So they are doing, they're collecting this data, but the benefit of being, I guess, the test subject here is that we get crosswalk improvements, which is something that we have wanted as well. In addition to that, there's been other work going on here. If you can see from this picture, so we had a, and this was communicated to you all as well, we had a tree removed there at the intersection that was a visibility issue, so folks standing on the corner there couldn't be seen. It was also blocking the signage that was previously there. I know that Public Services was also out and painted the triangles, which were, were discussed as well. And we've, we, I guess, one thing that was a change is that DOT requested that the signage at that, that was non-compliant DOT signage that was there. So that has been removed, and they've given us guidance here, which you can see on the next, oh, actually, let me, before I jump in there, the tree that removed, I just wanted to show this, actually creates nice symmetry in the park. That one that was close to the corner, it was kind of offset, so now you have big tree, three little trees, big tree, so it actually fits, I think, the, the artistic look there a lot better than it did before, and improved safety, which is fantastic. So this is DOT's preferred signage, and you may have seen it at others, at other cities and towns, is this mid-line or centerline crosswalk markers. This would be, this is their preferred, but not so preferred that they're going to pay for it. So if we want to install these, we are, we are welcome to, for us to purchase, install, and maintain. And there may be other opportunities downtown to do that. When I looked at them, they were $250 to $300 plus freight to get them in for each sign. So there's those opportunities. There's also, I have a call later this week with DOT about a crosswalk signal, because when they did the crosswalk at church, there's a signal there, but there's not actually a crosswalk button, which I think creates a lot of confusion as to who has the right-of-way. So looking at what the opportunities are to be able to get a crosswalk signal there and help improve that as well. And then had a great conversation with, with the Police Department earlier this week as well, or late last week, about potentially a future kind of downtown safety program in terms of pedestrians and signage. So more to come on that. So with that, oop, back, back, there we go, jumping ahead. So any questions there on any of this?
Mr. Granis?
Patrick, are those signs permanently affixed to the asphalt, or how does that work?
Yes, they are permanently fixed, and they also bend back. So if they, if they do get struck by something, they're supposed to pop back into place. So that is, and again, I've, I did a little kind of field research as I'm learning the area, and I've seen them in Holly Springs and Apex and, you know, you know, other downtowns for similar applications. So it seems to be something that would work, and I think we'd be in good company if we did choose to install those on Main Street.
I think that's a great idea, especially from visual point of view. It's like, you can't miss that.
If it's permanently attached, isn't there going to be an issue for parades and, Christmas parade and so forth, where they ride down the middle of the street?
Hold on, one more, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
That sign, I assume it is in the middle of the street?
Yes, it's on the center of it, yep.
Parades, Christmas parade, parade we had the other day with the fire department, everything went down the middle of the street. Isn't that going to be a problem with the sign in the middle of the street?
That's a good question. I think in terms of permanent, I think that it's bolted in, so I think it can be removed, but it is a permanent fixture, but they could be removed. I don't have, I'm not, I will make sure that if we move forward with something like this, that I will ask the contractor about that, because I'm sure we're not the first downtown to have this on their main street that's had to remove them for parades, but that's a very good point that I'll make sure to ask about.
Yep. Cool. Anyone else? So this is awesome. Do you have a question?
I've got a comment, if it's open for public.
I don't mind, come on.
Should I wipe? I guess I do. Hold on.
Sorry.
Let me send that in first here.
Emily Beddingfield, 217 West Stalling Street. I just wanted to say I have been a longtime advocate for these modifications to our downtown streetscape. I almost daily walk around with a now-three and five-year-old, and I can say firsthand that even the improvements we've had with the higher-visibility crosswalks and new signage kind of we've seen throughout, I've noticed a definite difference in driver behavior. And I think things like the button at church and the mid-block crossings with the in-street signage are going to make a really big difference as we continue to see more and more pedestrians downtown. So any sort of funding or support that would necessitate or come before these initiatives, I would fully support, and that's me speaking as a resident of downtown Clayton. Thank you so much.
I've had emails and contact of people who are so happy to have seen, to see what's been going on. And I have noticed, because I'm out a lot, that people are actually slowing down as they approach all these new stripes on the, on the road, you know? So like, the visual is definitely that of caution. And we did, I didn't experience that before, so.
Yeah, I had, I think a lot of it is education, understanding that anytime that there's one sidewalk leading to another sidewalk on the other side of the road, that there is inherently a pedestrian crosswalk and pedestrian right-of-way. Somebody was the other day stopping to let preschoolers cross the street on Church Street, and somebody drove by screaming, "It's not a stop sign." And so I think the more that we can continue to educate and have this signage, I think we're really going to continue to see those changes. So thank you guys so much for that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? If not, we're going to move on to the Main Street tree removal.
So a request came from a, a building owner that owns the building that's 331 to 335 East Main Street. And going back, there was some guidance provided by DDA back in 2013, 2014 on street tree removal, and also a request by council at the time that they would be presented on any street trees. So that's what, that's what the purpose of this is. I highlight a few that I think are pertinent to this particular case and have some pictures here for you just to, just to look at. But sightlines at intersections being important, interfering with overhead utilities always vary if you cannot prune, as would be one reason for removal, and blocking window displays and signage. And I think a key point on this as well is pruning should not be topping of the tree, which may be required if you look at where the utilities run here to make it appropriate. So just look at a couple pictures. As you can see, you've got utility lines running in this picture on the left, kind of through the center of the tree here. That's another version, you all see where it's getting also into the building here, and you can also see those lines there, and it's also very close to the intersection at Main and Lombard. And in terms of replacement of the tree, there was some guidance here. This was all done by a landscape architect at the time when these, when these policies were made, would be that trees would be offset or set back a minimum of three feet to the curb, so they aren't hit by bumpers or car doors, bull bouts and other things like that, which are not available here. Sightlines again, and overhead utilities of being things to avoid in this. And as you can, I will just go back to this picture. You can see in the middle photo there where this tree sits relative to the building. There's not really a good place to replace this tree in the current streetscape, because you can't do that three-foot setback for bumpers and car doors. The parking spot ends right about there. But also to make sure you have proper access on the sidewalk to get through that if you were to set that back, it just creates a condition where it'll be, I think, difficult to replace that tree at this time. I would also note, note that this building, the, the building owner is going in for a facade grant that's been approved by DDA recently to repaint this building. So part of removing the tree will help get that tree off and give the painter access to the tree. So our recommendation is to remove the tree, and currently, the, the process has been to collect a $250 kind of fee in lieu for feature tree replacement upon the opportunity to do that with either a different, with, you know, a different streetscape or something of that manner. So that's, that's the staff's recommendation that we've put forward.
And I don't think you need an act, this is not an action item, right?
I don't think this is an action item, I just wanted that.
A policy and to update the council when we're cutting the tree down.
Mr. Thompson?
So I want to understand this. This was our tree that we put there?
Correct.
Yes. It's causing a problem, and we're going to take it down and ask the business owner to pay a fee in lieu.
The, the current policy that has been in place is to, it's about a, in talking with Public Services, it's about a $2,000 job for the removal of the tree. This is, this fee is actually to replace that tree in the future, so this is for the replacement, and that has been the standard practice that, that precedes me in terms of having that fee there, so.
Yeah, it, it has been that way for a while.
I just want to go on record, I don't support making any business owner pay for something that we put there and causes a problem. It's one thing if they put the tree there, but we put the tree there, and I just, I don't, I don't, I won't ever support that.
I would tend to agree with you.
And the comment I would make is, we brought this to you just to be consistent with what you've done in the past.
Right, right.
The observation I had, because I had some confusion about this too, at some point, we plant these trees and they get too big. What, what our Public Utilities Group, Public Works Group said was it costs a couple, a little over a couple thousand dollars to take them down. The $250 was to keep the greenscape going, and kind of like a sidewalk fee-in-lieu program, the theory was we were going to have a downtown green program, sidewalk program, and that fee-in-lieu would go to replace the tree back consistent with the way the, the downtown development plan would go. Well, we're not going to fund that. And so the question would be, you know, one of the things I asked Patrick, I said, why don't we just put a smaller tree there? If we're going to make somebody pay a tree, put the tree there, because if we're not going to do anything for five years, why are we taking the money?
That's right.
But, but we kind of came down with this request as let's stay consistent, because it is taking us a couple thousand, and the thought process was that it was kind of a, to keep the downtown green kind of thing. But it does bring to mind that we need a policy, Patrick, and I've talked about that from you guys, to say, how do we want to handle greenscape downtown until we get a downtown greenscape plan done? Because there's other trees that are going to have to come down, too.
Can I make a comment also?
Yeah, and I'll shut up there with that.
You're on a good point there, but what I, I've been thinking about this, is there any way that we could put these trees in planters instead of putting them into the sidewalks? Because as you see, the sidewalks are popping up. We're having to shave these sidewalks down because of the root systems popping them up. We could put trees back inside of a planter and contain that root system. Does that make sense?
It does. I would have to look back at the policy guidance from that DDA did with the landscape architects. I know that there was planter box, there was some guidance there, so I'd have to look back at that. I know in this particular case, you would have to move it in the right location, because it's not, it's also about maintaining the correct width on the sidewalk there between the buildings. So I'm not a landscape architect, but my guess would be that you'd have to have a large enough box to contain enough of a root system to keep a healthy tree there, and that you may have conflicts with the size of the root system and how wide it has to be to accommodate, and then also setting that back from the curb so you don't have collisions with cars.
The only hurdle with that is that, you know, if we, if we, if you've got a tree that's, you know, only like 10 inches in diameter, and then we try to put a planter out there that's three feet or four feet square, when I try to open that door, or a senior citizen or a mom with kids tries to open that door, then that big box is there. And that big box really isn't there when we're talking about the diameter of a tree. So I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of in favor of, it seems kind of ridiculous, but I do understand the offset of the cost. But I think we also have to keep in mind that other people who have done renovations in downtown definitely paid this fee.
And we'll do whatever you ask us to do, because it's a policy and it's one that y'all can waive or not waive, so I'm sorry, you've got it.
Yeah, I think the plan or concept is great, but I just think you have to think about that, trying to open the door, and there's that big box there.
Councilman Holder has it.
Oh, Mr. Holder?
Opening, opening doors because of tree boxes and so forth is not the problem that's already here. Trees are a problem. If you park too close to them and try to open the passenger door, you hit the tree. So we've already got that problem. So I think it raises a question is, how bad do we want trees on Main Street?
That's right.
All I'm, all I'm hearing is they're a problem.
All right, anyone else? All right, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
I'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak? All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Thompson?
I know the rest of you received invitations to meet with Dana Wooton from the Chamber for coffee and conversation to just get a general update. I had a meeting with her this morning, and it was a very nice chat, and I want to just make sure we continue to support and thank our Chamber for all they do, and the, the Chamber, you know, a thriving Chamber is a sign of a thriving community. And I just want to make sure that we give them thanks every time we get a chance. They've done a lot for the business community during this COVID pandemic, and they're, you know, certainly suffering on their own for decreased revenue, but I really appreciate what they've done for us.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Holder?
I want to bring up to the town, to the council that since COVID started, we've had a real serious problem in Glen Marle with not street legal golf carts being driven by underage teenagers and so forth. And the policy we've used in the past has always been, if it's street legal and has a licensed driver, it's no different from a car. And the chief and I talked about this, it's been an epidemic this summer, and we need to think about what we're going to do about it.
Agreed. Anyone else? All right, if there are no additional comments...
All right. If there are no additional comments, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session after a 15-minute break.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I will, if there's nothing else to come before this council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.